More money.
That seems fine. I think especially if you flag it for later, I think it's fine.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoices from the meeting dated March 22, 2022 in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll second the motion made by Ms. Sherlock.
And Ms. Anderson, any other questions? All in favor of approving the role the role is outlined, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, Sam, myself, my motion carries. All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have old business which includes COVID-19 updates, which I imagine are quite brief at this point. Thank you for sending them along.
You're very welcome. It's a very nice graph to look at, isn't it?
Yes.
We have had, well, first of all, the first thing I know that I didn't know before our meeting with the public health people today is that since the beginning of COVID, way back in February and March of 2020, the town of Nahat has had five hundred and eighty-seven confirmed positive cases. Obviously, an extremely low number relative and even a low percentage relative to other communities. There are three active cases that are known in the town of Nahat currently. They are adults. And the reason I said it the way I did is we're now functioning heavily relying on home tests. And we are at the discretion of an individual to tell us if their home test is positive. These three have had PCRs and therefore, you know, they're in the system. But there are, it is possible that there are more cases out there that we don't know about. Those individuals who are active today have result as of today have resulted in three close contacts at the elementary school students who are following the protocols provided by the state and by our public health nurse and school nurse. Now, what that means is they may be quarantined at home and not coming to school. If they're have no symptoms and they may be in school if they're exempt with a mask. And trying not to identify, you know, students or grades or this is really where it's important. Because if I told you that just on a theoretical basis, by the way, this is not the case. But if I told you that the student who was a close contact and is not exempt and needs to wear a mask is was in X grade and there's only one student in X grade who's wearing a mask tomorrow, then everybody would be able to know who that is. So that's why I I avoid that level of detail. Once again, there have been no school transmissions. And as you could tell by the graphs I sent you, if you had time to look at them. And I apologize for them being a little late. We have had one positive case related to a student or a staff member in school in the last seven weeks. So we're doing very, very well. On the other hand, we had thirteen students absent because of illness today. Cheryl's doing phenomenal job of following up, contacting parents, talking to them, our parents or guardians. And strongly requesting that the students and or the members of the house are tested. Parents have been extraordinarily cooperative as always. And we can identify all thirteen of those have either an illness that's either bacterial, a viral, most of them are viral cold or some gastrointestinal thing that's going around. But none of them are are absent because of COVID. With the exception of those three that I pointed out earlier that the the students of those three that are not exempt or is not exempt is quarantined. But that's a different number. That's not in the thirteen. I also want you to know that you probably know that the town of Nahat has plenty of antibody tests. So tomorrow, Mr. Andrews or Vinnie will be going over to Town Hall and picking up two giant boxes of them. And we will be distributing them to parents and guardians at drop off and pickup. And if a parent can't make it, we'll, you know, we'll stuff a backpack, you know, whatever. Just so parents and guardians have enough antibody tests so that when a student doesn't feel well, they can feel free to give that quick test without worrying that, you know, if I use them all up, then I won't have one when I really need it. So we will make make sure that we get out. One of the factors in these tests is they have an expiration date. So they're not doing anybody any good in the boxes at Town Hall. So we want to get them out into the community as quickly and as widely as possible.
And their antigen test?
Mm hmm.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. Well, I probably said.
The antibody, I just wanted to confirm. I think the rapid ones are all antigen.
They are.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Thanks.
By the way, in case you didn't know, I'm I'm sure, let's see, one, two, three of you know, so for Beth, the new variant that has been identified is BA two point two.
Believe me, Tony, I know. I know. Heard it everywhere.
I have no idea what that means, but that's what it is.
There should be no BA part two.
Yeah, and it seems to be similar to Omicron or an Omicron variant that is highly transmissible, but symptoms are relatively minor. Any questions? Once again, I want to thank our staff, particularly Cheryl and Deb for really doing a remarkable job of keeping us healthy. Town meeting continues to be on the agenda because we I am awaiting information from the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. What kind of a town meeting is going to be? At this point, it the they are leaning towards in person and indoors. So I wanted you to know that because we all go.
No.
The difference between an indoor and an outdoor town meeting is approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. The cost is about thirty-eight versus thirteen. So and unless things change, it would seem reasonable that we could be indoors. The problem would be indoors is when I first became superintendent and Lauren and I were going to town meetings, if we had two hundred people, we felt it was a great town meeting. We were probably more worried about not having a quorum than how many people should. Lately, that has not been the case. So if four or five hundred people show up, I'm not quite sure how that would be handled in terms of, I mean, we're not getting five hundred people in Town Hall. So that's something luckily that we don't have to worry about. We can just stand back and observe.
Observe, right, exactly. Get there early.
That's right. Well, you all have a reserved seat, so you can actually come late and still get a good seat.
When is town meeting? Sorry?
May twenty-first.
Saturday, May twenty-first. There has been conversation, I don't believe the Board of Selectmen has weighed in yet, about whether Saturday will continue to be done down the road or whether there'll, because most towns don't have town meeting on a Saturday. Most town meetings are on a Monday or Tuesday and then the second night on a Tuesday and a Wednesday, but it isn't a bylaw, so it would in it, it would require a slow process to change it. Madam Chair, four C is the policy manual. I am sitting here with egg on my face once again. The policy manual is finished. The index is finished. The numbering is driving Chris crazy, and I am, of course, of very little help. Because in the beginning of the book, we have pages that we don't want numbered. And then we want the first page of the first policy to start number one. And we're very close. She said she she's gonna have it done after a few more hours. We had it done once, and then there was a minor glitch in terms of numbers. It started over again for some reason at page like three hundred and twenty-five. The other thing we're going to, I'm going to do with your permission is I'm going to publish an annex, an addendum, rather than try to constantly, every time we we add a policy, blend it in and then have to renumber everything. Unless we find that the renumbering can be done quickly. So nobody here is old enough to remember the World Book Encyclopedia or Encyclopedia Britannica. But if you if you bought a set, it was locked, the information was locked in the year you bought it. And then every year you would get a book that updated.
Copy.
Yeah. So I'm thinking of that.
Waiting for the letter T.
M and S were always very thick. So I am, I'd like you to think about that as a potential for being efficient in the future. Okay. Doesn't mean it has to be done that way, but we can figure out something else, but that seems to be the best way. And then maybe every X number of years we do a reprint, you know, or a redesign and renumber. Because right now in my inbox, I have about eight policies that are going to require updating. And, you know, it it would be really frustrating for a certain individual that we know and love to to finish the policy manual and then a month from now have to
Have something.
Policies in. Okay.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you, Tony. Do you want to move on to the facilities update?
Absolutely. The superintendent's report facilities update. Okay, so the ceiling fans in the cafeteria will be installed on June twentieth and and between June twentieth and July eighth. On us, we have a emergency closing that causes schools to go later. The bid that I accepted was low enough for us to take the original bid for the ceiling fans and also get a reworking of our security system, which we'll talk about in executive session. So we can get both of those things for the are actually a little bit less than the original bits on the ceiling fans. So that's good. I sent you a picture. You may not have had a chance because it was very late.
The water filling stations?
Of the the two stations and that are in the cafeteria. The only thing I think we would probably want to think about down the road is one of how what about filling station and refrigerated unit down on the first floor? Because now we have three, three on one floor and none downstairs. The I got one of the two proposals from one of the two companies that's looking at the roof. It's going to be substantially more of a job than I initially anticipated. The first estimate to just lay the work out, not to do any of the work, but just to investigate it and look at the work that needs to be done is a minimum of sixteen thousand dollars. And that's that's just inspecting the roof, laying out what three levels of repair, the gym. They're going to be looking at the cafeteria roof because that roof was not installed properly. As Kevin will tell you, every time we have a heavy wind, we we have a repair up there. So they're going to be looking at that. They're also going to be looking at the flat roofs above the administration wing and the kitchen that bumps into taller walls because they need some work. So I'm waiting. I did get an email today from the second company and they said they'll have it by by the end of the week. We are beginning to look at our phone system. Our phones go back to the building project in two thousand seven that was finished in two thousand seven. My guess is they were bid in two thousand five, which makes the system in the neighborhood of fifteen to seventeen years old, which in terms of technology is a century. Town Hall and the departments of the town are getting new phone systems. So Tony and I have talked about kind of piggybacking on that. But more information on that to come. And that's about it for the facilities.
Mr. Parentazi, I know you had shared with me that you thought the gym roof, we were initially saying maybe, you know, summer of twenty twenty-three, but you were thinking it might actually have to wait longer, given how big of a project it was?
Yeah. The the project is going to be just estimating four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, which means that even if we get a thirty percent payment from MSBA, it pays to have MSBA involved. Their process is enormously complex and time consuming. I have in my folder, I think, twenty-three pages. Each page is a different step of the process. And it would start with us getting the analyses that I talked about, even though the town would have to pay for those and then they would be reimbursable backwards once the project was accepted by MSBA. It, we would have to hire a consultant, owner's project manager, an OPM. That's going to add additional money. Because initially, both both people who were here, both inspectors are clear that we can't just put a roof on. The the gym roof and the cafeteria roof don't pass the building code number nine, which means they have to be re-insulated. And they would have to be re-insulated from the exterior, which is more expensive than just putting, you know, bats of fiberglass up. So we would have to go to, we would have to have the Board of Selectmen approve the the superintendent. Yes, putting in together a statement of interest, an SOI, it's called. We would have to have the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, both vote those after deliberation in public meetings. Then the paperwork have to would have to be filed. The it takes about three months for the MSBA, this, the School Building Authority to accept or decline the project.
Project.
Then after they accept it, we need to go to a town meeting and authorize the expenditures. And the way it works is you have to, you have to authorize the expenditures to cover the entire project. Because because the state doesn't want to be on the hook in case something happens. One year they don't have any, I'm just making up something. One year they don't have any money and they can't pay any of the projects off and they don't want to be on the legal hook. So, but the town would be. Now, obviously, since its inception in two thousand seven, that's never happened. And one doesn't think it's going to happen, but that's the way it works. So it would be the SOI is approved, the design is accepted. It goes out the bid, the bids accepted somewhere in that process, town meeting, authorizes the expenditure of the full process. And then obviously you move forward.
How could all of those steps theoretically occur before town meeting in May twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
They could.
Okay. All right.
The the ultimate decision, though, rests in the following. Should we replace a roof that is not leaking at a time when construction expenses are exorbitant? It's it's a it's a gambler's bet. You know, two years from now, will roofing be cheaper? I don't know. It's never been as high as it is and it's never been in as short supply as it is right now. So the, I think the smart gamble would be that as long as the roof doesn't need a repair, as long as it doesn't need anything, you know, to ride it out a little bit and get past this enormous bubble. But you know, that's a dialogue, not, it's not my decision. That's a dialogue to have. Because once we start down the path, the MSBA really doesn't like you to delay because they budget all of their money based on when the approvals and your timeline. It can be delayed a year or so, but that's about it.
At what point would you say that you would have to start the process if we wanted to ultimately meet the goal of having it at town meeting next year? Is that way? By the fall, okay. I mean, I think that's reasonable that we could readdress it closer to the fall and see where construction costs are and then decide, you know, do we do we start then or do we wait a little bit longer?
Yeah. The complexity is really in even if construction material is cheaper in twenty-four.
Right.
Your bids are going to be predicated on the cost when the bids go out.
Right.
So you don't want the bid to be at the peak either.
Right.
Because then you're going to get high bids and the contractors are going to make the money. Because they're going to bid it out at, let's say, two hundred and fifty hours, ten by ten square. And they're going to get it for two hundred and they keep the difference. Because, you know, you sign a contract on the amount the lowest reasonable and qualified bid. So it's a, it's a tough one. You know, as you, as you all know, I've just been through this ten-year process with Somerville High School, so it can be enormously time consuming. So in my mind, what I'm thinking is getting the NTA negotiations in the rearview mirror, both Unit A and Unit B. Today, I worked for a brief period of time on it, on the contract extension for the Healy Bus Company. I, we need a contract for the food service provider. And then the NTR contract extension is up in twenty-three. So I don't think I'm going to do that before the roof. But I'd like to get the contracts behind me and then be able to focus on the roof. Because, you know, with everything.
What's the NTR?
North Reading Transit Company. It's the special education busing. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I hate when I do that. I make the assumption everybody knows what I'm talking about. But I think if I get the contracts behind me and I can really, you know, in addition to the day-to-day operations evaluations, et cetera, et cetera, focus
Okay.
on on the on the roof, then we could be, we could be ready. But if it goes to town meeting twenty-three, the work won't actually be done till summer of twenty-four.
Yeah.
Because there's no way you can mobilize and get all the approvals you need, et cetera, et cetera. And we will be spending money upfront. I would respectfully say that this roof needs a consultant, a contractor consultant too. Simply because we don't have a facilities, you know, director or manager who who doesn't do any work. I said that, who is who is managerial.
Right.
I said that as better poorly as you could say it.
Mr. Parentazi, if we didn't consider replacing the roof and then it needed, it did end up leaking, be a situation where we would have an emergency or repair? And what would that look like?
The MSBA does have an emergency repair process. So if it was a substantial repair, if it leaked a little bit and it was a ten thousand dollar fix, we would be responsible. The roofs, I mean, three years ago, I had the peak of the roof repaired. And that was the only place the water was coming in. And that's held up beautifully. It's the type of roof that won't blow off in high winds. It's all asphalt tarred down.
Okay.
So that's good. It is not a flat roof, so the roof rolls off, the water rolls off. That's good. So not knowing how old it is, it's, it probably won't have a failure. That's the word that would cause the emergency process to kick in. I'm much more worried about the cafeteria roof failing, a major failure because of the material and the way it was put on in two thousand seven than I am the gym roof, which is probably thirty or forty years old.
Thank you.
Okay.
Stay on after-school activity?
Yes. This is, this is like smile activity. We are beginning to start our after-school activities again. The first two we are going to have is a musical, a once-a-week music program for some of our students and parents who wish their students to participate. I believe the first offering is going to be a ukulele class. And and then we are also going to be starting our twice-a-week academic support. Those jobs are both posted at the present time. And we're awaiting to see if staff members, if you remember, we have to have it ten days before a decision can be made. It has to be posted for ten working days. And those, that time period will be up next week and then we can move forward.
So these aren't PTO activities? They're school-funded activities?
Yes.
Wait, does that mean we're looking for a ukulele teacher?
We do already have an applicant for that.
Okay. Thank God.
I think there is someone in mind.
Yes.
When the position was posted.
Mr. Andrews was very smart when he planned this. He said, what can you do? Okay, we'll do it.
Would there be fees for these programs?
No.
That's great.
Oh, no. Nope. And then we're also restarting the outdoor floral gardening. And then we're also re- uh, restarting the outdoor, uh, floral gardening, uh, digging in the mud.
Garden club.
Yep.
Great.
And today, no, yesterday. Yesterday. We had our first visit from the new round of the Northeastern Marine Science, uh, staff, uh, who are visiting each of the classrooms once this, this spring. And then next year, we will begin again our, uh, three or more visits per classroom. Um, so we're thrilled to get that off the ground again. Uh, the, uh, staff is actually going into the classrooms this year as compared to outdoors, you know, which we had to do for COVID. So it's, uh, it's a really positive thing. And then, uh, not on the, uh, my list is beach, uh, beach stickers are available. I'm assuming, I'm assuming you know, but I want to make sure you do, that all of your staff are eligible for in the hot beach sticker, even if they don't live in the community.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's really nice.
Yeah, it is. It's a, it's a nice little perk.
That's great. Inappropriate.
Yes. Thank you.
And the, they, uh, beach stickers can only be attained online.
Thank you. That's a good, uh, segue to Mr. Andrews for the, uh, principal report.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. I see that I'm already unmuted, so that's wonderful. Yes, uh, I'm looking forward to the u- ukulele club. We, uh, Ms. Walsh mentioned that there's a number of students that own them already. It's a simple instrument to learn to, uh, play, a lot easier than, than the guitar. And Ms. Walsh specializes in string instruments. And so that's why, um, she thought this would be a great way to start back with our after-school, uh, instrumental offerings. Um, and it's a great, it, you know, it carries well, transports well, it's, uh, simple and you can really learn how to play a nice tune on it and, uh, enjoy it. And it's really, uh, coming back into, you know, the, the, the modern world here, I think. Um, so I'm looking forward to hearing those, uh, ukuleles in the, in the school. And, you know, the, the low cost and, like I said, easy to transport. So that'd be great.
Got out to parents, um, Mr. Andrews, or is it something that's, that's coming out now?
It's just coming out. We'll be getting the, um, we're looking at probably, starting with the upper grades. And, um, she's just finishing it in the form together. Um, as the superintendent mentioned, we just need to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row in terms of, um, any other applicants for the position. Um, and then, um, it'll probably actually start as soon as next week, certainly before April break.
Great. Wouldn't it be hilarious if we had a tsunami of ukulele strumming teachers coming down?
These days, you don't know.
Really, you don't.
One never knows.
So yeah, it was great to see Northeastern University back again today. And, and as the superintendent mentioned, they'll be seeing each grade. And we're hoping they'll probably be back again for a second lesson later in the, uh, spring. I want to let everyone know that the MCAS will be starting on April seventh with grade three. Uh, last year we had one session per grade of ELA and one session per grade of math. This year we're back to the typical two ELA, two per math, and this is for grades three, four, five, and six. ELA is scheduled for two to two and a half hours and math for one and a half hours. And these are all done on the students' Chromebooks, which they're very familiar with and comfortable with. They've been practicing with Mr. Lockwood on how to use the rulers, how to highlight, how to choose answers, cross out, use all the digital tools that they have now, uh, with the, uh, online MCAS. So that'll be underway shortly and, um, the dates will be sent out to you individually, um, at per-grade level. Each grade is having theirs continuously, so third grade will have two in a row, fourth grade will have two in a row. So that they're used to that and then they'll be done. Um, and so you can, you know, you can count on having, uh, two, two days in a row of those programs. And then they, you know, they get a break during the, during the test. And it's a little bit less of a pressurized environment than it was ten years ago or so, which I think helps the kids, helps the staff, um, do well on it and really make a fair assessment of their progress. I want to let you know that our seed order came in for the community garden plots that the school has. We are focusing on snap peas, beets, carrots, bush beans, and astersums and sunflowers. These are all plants that we can plant now, not have to worry about over the summer. Uh, a lot of them we can eat before we get out of school. And we'll be having, uh, specific lessons about life cycles, uh, parts of a plant that each one of those vegetables is. And, um, and really tying it into the science program at each grade level. So looking at adaptations, life cycle, uh, counting, and snap peas are great for doing counting lessons in the lower grades. Um, and, you know, each, each particular plant has something to offer for the students. And so we're looking forward to doing that and I'm looking forward to getting out with them, uh, in the community garden.
Andrews, what's an astersum?
Uh, it's a little flower that you can eat and, uh, it has a real nice peppery flavor, has a round, uh, leaf. And, um, it's yellow or orange or red. And it's one of the, uh, annual that you can, um, you can plant now and it'll flower before, uh, before June. I got all early stuff, so
Yeah.
the carrot varieties are early varieties that we can, you know, you can eat a carrot when it's tiny. Uh, or you can forget about it and come back in the fall and see how it did. Um, so we're not doing tomatoes, we're not doing peppers, anything tropical like that that needs care over the, over the summer. Although students will be, uh, able to access the garden over the summer. Um, but I find that, you know, focusing on plants that, you know, are hardy and, um, give a quick turn on your investment are best, best for, uh, school gardens.
Okay. So great that you're really bringing this back again to all the things that you do, Mr. Andrews, they're centered around, you know, place-based learning and applying what you're learning in science and in history to your environment. It's just so meaningful and so fun and, and wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for the recognition. I really, makes my day fun, you know, I, I, I'm glad when I have the forty minutes to get outside with the students. Um, you know, so, uh, it's an opportunity for me as well. Uh, some enrichment program, uh, enrollment is, you know, we had a big burst. It looks like everyone's enrolled that wants to enroll and we're looking at twenty-six students in total, which I think is a great number. It's twenty percent of the students in the school, just about, that are eligible. Um, so that's fantastic. We have two teachers hired. One of them is already a teacher at the school, Ms. Fadaro. She'll be the lead teacher. And then we also have a, a second teacher who's also a preschool director and a wonderful, uh, person that we're so happy to have. Uh, she lives in a hunt and she's gonna be volunteering, in fact, uh, in kindergarten and first grade as well over the next couple of months before she starts her role as a summer school teacher. And so I'm really looking forward to having her at the school, uh, even before we get out. She's looking forward to getting to know her students before that program starts. I also have an achievement presentation for you that, um, I can, I can do after that. I'm not sure if it's a separate agenda item tonight.
It is not.
Yeah, we didn't. So you can, after you're done with your update, you could go, you could, um, give the achievement presentation.
Fantastic. The rest of our summer hiring is also complete with the exception of an occupational therapist. So we have our special educators that are gonna be integrating into the summer enrichment program. As a reminder, the program for special education, uh, programming will be integrated into the summer enrichment program. Our next step for the summer program is going to be to send out a survey to families to ask them what particular days or weeks will they be available, uh, for the program? We understand it's a four-week program and students might likely be away for a week, uh, here or there. And so we'll be asking families, what days will you actually be, um, able to attend? So they can plan for that. So anyone who's registered for the summer enrichment program, uh, be on the lookout for a survey soon to let us know, uh, what are your blackout dates for the summer enri- summer enrichment and what days will we be able to attend? Uh, small update on the Heritage Trail Enhancement. I've submitted our application for the forty thousand dollar project to bring a trail from the Flash Road Playground to the school. It's now a two-year program, a two-year project. The first year will be planning and support, uh, from a landscape architect. We have, uh, three companies that are going to be submitting bids for the, uh, first phase, which is to plan and, um, identify where the route would be. And then year two would be the installation phase, which would, um, you know, be the actual work to bring, uh, a trail from Flash Road, uh, through the fields over to the school. At the bottom of my, my report here, I have some dates for you. Uh, we've identified, uh, Monday, June thirteenth as field day. And, uh, the fourteenth would be a rain day. Uh, Thursday, we're looking at for a sixth grade graduation. And then looking at the last day of school is projected to be Friday, June seventeenth with an eleven-thirty dismissal.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Do you want me to make you the host? Are you gonna share information for the achievement presentation?
Uh, I'd like to, yes, please, if you, um, if you do that, um, I'd like to share my screen. Uh, and it says now I'm the host. I'm just gonna make my little window here bigger. Buttons, buttons, okay. Great. Okay, so tonight I am bringing to you a brief slideshow to share with you. Is it loading now? Okay, great. Uh, presentation of iReady. iReady, if you recall, came to us last year as a free, uh, software program that we used to assess students' progress and also to offer interventions. And we're continuing to use it this year, three times a year in grades one to six. Right now we're feeling that one to six is really the best target audience. They offer it for kindergarten. Um, but it's pretty hard to assess kindergarteners, uh, authentically through a computer. And so that's why we're really focusing on, um, grades one to six at the school. Uh, so what I'm, thought I would do is share with you how we did in math compared to the state and how we did in reading compared to the state. These are the two major areas that iReady assesses. Um, and students take, take a diagnostic at the start of the year and at the end of the school year. I mean, start of the year, middle of the year, and, and end of the year. One thing that I noticed right away was that, um, we, when we, I'll go to our data first, actually, and then I'll jump back. Um, if you look at our data, um, right away you notice, oh geez, it looks like over half the students are below grade level in math, for example. Um, and I wanted to really make sure that we understood what that is, what's, what's normal, what's typical in a school. And so if we, um, here we have our math scores, we're looking at, um, sixty-four percent of our students, oh no, I'm sorry, fifty-six percent of our students were considered below grade level. But if you look at the statewide, uh, average is, uh, sixty-four percent, uh, below grade level in math. I'm gonna scroll back to this for a second so you can see this. Um, so what they have here is Massachusetts in, in the school. Um, they have in-school and they have other. In-school means they took the assessment in the school. Other means they took it at home, uh, or they were doing the test at home. It's either homeschool students or students who are remote, uh, is the other category. Not too significant, but if you can just look at the, um, Massachusetts in school, we see, um, forty-two percent were what they consider one grade level below in math. Eleven percent, two grades, uh, level below, and then eleven percent, three grade levels below in math. And then we have about, what is it, thirty, um, thirty-five percent are at or above, um, grade level in math. And so the Johnson School, um, is higher than those two, than what the state did in that area in math. Keep that up. The other thing that this slide shows is, uh, growth rate. And so at the start of the school, we have our fall diagnostic and we have our most recent diagnostic. So in the fall, we have, uh, I think you can see my, can you see my cursor when I do this? Yeah, okay. So in the fall, we had twelve and nineteen percent above grade level or at or above. And then now we have twenty-five and nineteen percent. So you can see that we've improved over the school year in math, um, through grades one through six. So we've, we've decreased the number of students that were below grade level or considered below grade level. So this is mathematics. Um, looking at reading, here's the reading graph for Massachusetts. And again, we're seeing similar numbers, thirty percent, one grade below. And then we have eleven and thirteen, uh, two and three grades below. So that's gonna give you a total of fifty-four percent, um, below grade level in reading. And here we are in reading. So statewide was fifty-four and our school was, uh, forty-four percent below grade level in reading. And if you again look at our growth, we have our fall diagnostic right here. That's what we took in the, like, September to see how we were doing at the start of the school year. And more recently, we've been able to increase, uh, the green bars, which is a good thing.
Mr. Andrews, could I ask a question?
Please.
So when they're assessing for, this might be a really silly question, but when they're assessing for grade level, like, you know, if you have a student that's in the third grade, is it where they should be at for that time during the school year? Because obviously there's learning happening throughout the school year. Or is the level for which you're assessing the same and therefore you anticipate that more children would be at grade level as the school year progresses?
No, that's, that's a perfect question and it's a question that, um, uh, right now, I, so I've asked a couple of questions to iReady and I got some back. The tool didn't immediately have the state level, so I said, okay, I can't just show this to the school committee. I need you to show how the state did. So I got those results back. My assumption is that it's talking about where they are right now at this part of the school year. And so I, I, and I am gonna, I, I'm gonna ask, and I, I, I really, um, I'm gonna ask that question to them and get back to you at the next meeting because it's my assumption that this is a snapshot in, say, February or, or January. You know, obviously, you know, and, and I'm hoping that they're showing us that it's, it's not just gonna, you know, automatically close as you go. You know, it's that, it's showing you like, okay, now compared to like January kids compared to other January kids, right? So, um, so it's a great question. My assumption is that it's based on this time of year and not just, they don't know it all yet. Does that get to your question?
Yeah, it definitely does.
Yeah, so I, my assumption is that it's, it's, it's a snapshot in this time and not
That, that's, yeah, I would, I would assume that too, because otherwise you would expect a lot more students to, you know, move to grade level.
Yeah, in fall, you would definitely not expect forty-two percent.
Right, right. There would be a bigger
It's not the end of the year.
There'd be a bigger delta.
Right. It's the fall metric that they were measuring in fall. And then now it's the winter measure, metric that they're measuring in the winter. And then we'll have like a June metric or May metric, um, in May.
Do they give you a timeframe that they recommend, you know, testing the students? Because then imaginably they're comparing it to where they should be at, like a, a fall assessment, a winter assessment, and a spring assessment?
It sure does. Um, it sure does. And so, uh, when I asked for the state metrics, they gave me, okay, these are the state metrics right here. This is back to this one. It says state metrics as of two twenty-seven. I can't tell because my, my, my screen is blocking this. Yeah, two twenty-seven. So th- this is the state metric as of February twenty, February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. So they're dialing in to how many kids are below grade level of where they should be on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. So, you know, when I asked, when I asked for the data, first they gave me, they gave me two So, you know, when I asked, when I asked for the data, first they gave me, they gave me two things. They gave me June of last year and they also gave me February of this year to compare it to. And so what I'm sharing here is the February of right now, which is when our students about took it.
Sorry if I'm missing this. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Sherlock.
No, please go ahead.
Um, but what are they norming to as to what defines grade level or below and above? Like, how are they, how are they determining that?
Sure. So if we look at, um, thank you for the question. If we look at the, the national norm and I think the superintendent spoke nicely to this at our staff meeting today when we were discussing it. Looking at everybody in the state, everybody in the country rather, and figuring that there's gonna be a middle of the peak and then there's gonna be two sides of the peak. And the middle of the peak is, is almost the normal. And then the sides are above and below. So it's not really, they're not looking, they don't wanna make a big wide group of people that are on grade level. They really wanna differentiate it in this, in these reports and in this information. So they're really looking to split out people, not say that everyone's on grade level. So it's, it's a bit not, it's a bit not, um, I guess, I don't know what to say fair, but.
It sounds like it's a tool for educators to understand who is in their classroom that is excelling and might need something more challenging. People who need something to come up to their peer group, you know, to differentiate within a classroom, but not to assess how well a school is doing in the same way that maybe the MCAS was. Is that right? So it's more for the teachers as it is, as opposed to saying the school is successful and the school is not.
Yeah, ma- madam chair, if I may. Mathematically, this test is based on what students are predicted to know in a grade as compared to where they fall relative to their peers in that grade, like MCAS does. So experts have determined what a first grader should read like. From talking to my colleagues and I know Kevin has done the same thing. This particular test seems more rigorous in its expectations than almost any we, we know. You know, it's not, it's not a norm psychometric, it's an expectation.
That's interesting, because if you look, you know, if this were a universally, if it were a universally accepted, you know, norm where this is where people should be at this grade level in order to adequately have a chance to succeed at the next grade level. And you're saying, you know, 50% of students aren't where it's, aren't quite where they're supposed, where there would be advantageous for them to be at this point in the year. Not just in our town, but in Massachusetts and in the, the country. That's interesting. Like, we're struggling as a country, maybe.
Or, or we're trying to make groups of students that are saying who's above, below and at. You know, it seems also that, that's, that's also part of it, is that we, we wanna say, you know, 20% above average, 20% below average and, and in that way. So I'm looking at more of, you know, the fifth, it's more of a percentile. You know, what percentile are you in a reading? It seems to be, that would be a better way to look at it. If you're at the 50 percentile, you're typical. It doesn't mean that you're not doing great, but 50 percentile is typical. And then below 50 is below typical and above 50 is above typical. Um, and it kind of breaks out that way if you look at these, these charts.
Madam Chair, the other thing that this test does is it draws a concrete line between mid-on grade, early-on grade, one grade below, two grades below. And unlike MCAS, which divides it, um, the score by a factor of 200. And therefore, if you are one, in this test, if you're one question below, one grade below, you're two grades below. But it could have been one item in the, in the MCAS that's taken into consideration. Because there are so many data points on the MCAS scale, this only has five.
Yeah, I guess I think the question came from like, um, I do know iReady, but I wasn't sure what they norm their expectation to, whether it was, um, some sort of, you know, uh, accepted standard that goes across the country in terms of like, you know, the amount of readiness at certain levels. I think when I looked at the Johnson School, the last graph that you had about the Johnson School, Mr. Andrews, and it said about 39 kids, you know, are one or more grade levels behind. If you separate that out against, you know, one to six, it would indicate that about, you know, six-ish students per grade level. You know, are behind, which would be about 30% of our kids in, in a classroom. And so that just, that felt a little hard to wrap my head around. I think, um, you know, just that feels large. I think the explanation that, you know, it's intended to kind of see who's progressing quickly and who is a little bit behind. You know, that those numbers are supposed to be large as a way for teachers to sort of look at, you know, where their class is and where they wanna put, you know, it's more, um, you know, attention. You know, I guess, um, that's, that's helpful context.
Absolutely, um, absolutely. Madam Chair, through you, I, I'd like to say that the next few slides are through growth. And, and growth in, you can, what it real, I think the real impact on this is about how, who's improving, what classes are improving and then, um, and, you know, and what is the growth rate? I guess. And so that's what it really, I think, is, is more impactful is, you know, how much has a student, has a student improved? How much has a class improved? And, and how's the student, how's the school doing with, um, growing their scores, I guess? So they also do offer some growth rates. I can share those with you. This is the fall diagnostic and then comparing it to the January most recent diagnostic. And so we get this with MCAS as well, but this tells us that we are, and what I wrote here was just that it's a moderate performance and moderate growth overall. So, you know, we would wanna be way over here, ideally, um, as a school. And it was interesting because I can see, I, when I split it out, there's another way I can look at it where I can see, you know, different, different classes and how they're performing and how they're growing. And it'll be really interesting to see this, you know, over maybe two years to see if there are classes that are consistent, or teachers really, that are consistently having high growth and high performance and are having, um, you know, having not so much growth. And so this is where I think it's more powerful. So here we see, um, this is in the high performance, so performance is decent. And growth is, you know, could be better, I guess, in math is what they're saying on this dot here for the school. And then in, uh, reading, we're looking at, you know, and for me, this is, this is pretty much just saying, you know, that the growth was about average. I mean, to, average would be right here, right? This is gonna be average growth, average performance. So we're right here. And we have a little bit of high performance, maybe not so much as high growth as we'd like to see. And this is comparing to the national norm. So the, the growth rates are a little bit more, um, more powerful and more helpful, I think. Especially when you get to the classroom level and, and get to me working with students and teachers.
And when did they take the test?
Three times. We took it, uh, ended January was the most recent.
End of January, okay.
It's a 45-minute assessment that they complete on their computer. That some of the teachers' feedback on reading was that the, the one-to-one reading assessment that the teachers do really didn't match up with the iReady. Be it that the, the lower grade students are having a hard time reading on a screen or maybe it's not measuring, um, their vocalizing of the written word. Because teachers also are doing assessments using a read aloud book on a one-to-one basis with the students. That's called the Benchmark Assessment System or the Fanta's panel system. So we have that as another assessment. And then we have our child study team meetings. We look at iReady scores, we look at their, uh, the benchmark assessment system that the students do with their teacher one-to-one. And then we're gonna look at, um, we're gonna look at unit assessments that they do from their everyday math program.
And you look for alignment or disalignment across those three and then share back with the teacher. That's great.
Exactly, exactly. And then we should have back with the parent as well and try to identify, you know, where there might be a gap and what we're noticing.
I'll also lift it like the end of January, who's, who are still trying to get through the Omicron effects on the school system. So like, that's, you can't not overstate that context, I think, for this, for this school year. So the fact that we're showing, you know, some growth, I think is great. And I'm sure we'll keep trucking along in the, for the third administration of the test.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. I, I really have to say that we're, I feel like we're, you know, finishing a marathon, catching our breath still. Today, we had a great staff meeting and we were just talking about typical school things. But just looking around the room, you know, where, you know, we are just re-energizing, I guess, from, uh, challenging several months, several, several months.
Yeah, my own thing, you know, as school community members, I think it's important for us to lift things that we see, you know, in the data and ask questions about them. And, um, to always, you know, ask those things. And I hope that's clear, my prior question about that we deeply get the context of like what teachers have been pulling off and will continue to pull off in these times. And, um, and, you know, the fact that we can even get test administrations done and we canceled the MCAS two years ago. So, uh, we're really, I think Nahand is really doing a great job and the teachers are doing great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions and so forgive my, um, lack of knowledge on the supports that are in place and the numbers. And so just looking at this data and the data from the last presentation for the, from the MCAS, and I know that that was only grades three and above. So math and reading, it seems like it's there. Need, looks like that there's more of a need for math support, if I'm looking at that correctly. And I was wondering, I mean, and not to say that we don't, we, we couldn't apply this to reading as well, but, you know, I know reading and reading, there's a lot of reading groups and group structured work and was wondering if there is something similar in math. I know you had said that you had booked or meet together with a child study team. But, uh, what would, what would these numbers generate in terms of support for students who are kind of at this, oh, first below grade level, let's just say.
Sure. Madam Chair, through you, it's a, it's a great question. Math is an area for focus for us, um, I think across the state and at the school. And that's gonna be a focus of the after-school program that Superintendent Parentozzi mentioned. I feel like math is one area where, especially at the elementary level, you can target it with independent practice, more so than you can with other areas such as reading. So we're gonna be looking at, starting off with having more, more of a targeted practice where teachers can identify through IXL the skills that a student needs to work on. The great thing about iReady and IXL is they both identify the strand. So if it's a specific geometry area that a student should practice on, the teacher can highlight that and create a, uh, an improvement plan for the student. So through CST, we'll be having students recommended to attend the, um, two or, one or two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays is what we're looking at right now. Because those are the days that are not already used for after-school extra help days. So that's, that's one way we're gonna, um, target that. But we could certainly look at how, how we could use ESAR funds, uh, in the coming school year for math intervention.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about that and, you know, wondering about, you know, we have the in-class instruction. And then I know that there's the special education instruction and that was wondering if there was a bridge somewhere in between where there would be additional support in the classroom to support these children who are kind of falling a little bit behind in whichever subject, whether it be math or reading. Was wondering, you know, what that looked like. So I appreciate the information about the after-school. But, you know, would be interested to hear more about, maybe doing, using ESAR funds for additional supports for the students and the teachers.
Certainly. I can say that in, um, in one particular grade, I, I've been able to add paraprofessional support, not special ed, um, for math groups.
Right.
So, um, we've looked at this one particular grade that, you know, could use it and is a larger class. And so we actually have, um, two paraprofessionals during math groups in the classroom and when they're doing centers. And so the, it, and the teacher affected, and that's the other thing, is you need effective educators, which is what we have right now, I feel. That are able to direct paraprofessionals to work specifically with, um, math groups and on, on specific tasks.
Great, thank you. And thank you for your, and the teachers for, for implementing this and having that structure in place to assist and recognize all those things. So appreciate it.
You should see, I, if I can just say one more thing, Madam Chair. The teachers can project, or now because of them, uh, last year, they're so used to using their whiteboards more and their projectors more. They'll put up groups and so they'll have three or four groups and they'll have students and they'll rotate through during a math block, um, every 15 minutes or 20 minutes. And then if the student has 20 minutes IXL practice, then they'll have 20 minutes with their teacher on a skill. And then they'll have maybe 20 minutes independent practice or with a second group with a paraprofessional. And I've just been really impressed with the way that COVID has given teachers practice using the, uh, the slides and, uh, the projector to just simply put up who needs to go where, how that's gonna work and just run the logistics of it. Um, it's been really effective to differentiate and to really target the students that need different, uh, different skills.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Sure thing. That concludes my, uh, report for the, uh, data here. Unless anyone has any questions, I can turn the hosting back over to the chair.
For this presentation.
Oh, my pleasure. Um, see here, now what do I do more? And then make host. Okay, change host.
And is that the end of the principal's report?
That concludes my report as well.
Thank you. Uh, so we can move to, uh, community correspondence. For any comments from the community or if any school committee members have had any correspondence with members of the community that they'd like to share. Anybody on the call from the, um, community would like to make a comment, you can type your name and address into the chat. Otherwise, um, you can also say a comment out loud if you'd like to do so. You can just states, state such in the chat. I think the chat is open. Have any members of the committee had any community correspondence? We can actually move right into new business. Oh, Mr. Parentazi, did you wanna share the request for Northeastern University for funding?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd be pleased to. As you know, because I sent you all a copy and I also copied the town administrator, I forwarded a letter to, um, Northeastern University through normal channels requesting a $25,000 donation, which has been consistent, uh, over the last, uh, I think almost 10 years. I am of the opinion that, uh, it will be received in a positive way, regardless of the, um, Challenges with developing and keeping positive relationships with the university. Uh, we have kept ours, uh, with the, both the marine science, uh, department and with the administration. So I'm optimistic that they will continue to support the Johnson Elementary School as they have in the past.
Great, thank you. And then I think, did we already do the update on summer programs? Is that all included?
The, um, we are still looking for an OT, an occupational therapist and, um. We have a lead on a school nurse, but we're still looking for a school nurse. If anybody wants a very nice, relaxed nursing job. For, uh. You know, three, three and a half hours a day, Monday through Thursday, uh, for, uh, four weeks in the summer. Where are your people? But thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, one other, uh, bit of new business. National Grid is replacing the gas main on, um, in the hot, as you know. And it is our. Blessing to have them here from seven AM to four PM, Monday through Saturday. Uh, for the next four months in and around Johnson Elementary Schools. So my guess is there's going to be some, um. Rough drive, driving, let's put it that way. Uh, but the end product, of course, will be new gas mains.
Are they going to be on the school campus or just in the roads surrounding the school?
Uh, in the school. In, uh, under the roads surrounding the school.
Oh, okay, all right. That makes sense. Um, do you have any personnel updates?
Only that the summer, uh, work has been posted, uh, the after-school positions have been posted. And, um. As, as the principal noted, uh, we're, we're in good shape for general education. And almost there for special education for the summer. Uh, I have sought a staff member or two who would be interested in starting school early. Uh, if you remember last summer in August, we had a program. For four days. Uh, and right now, uh, I have not been successful, uh. Finding anyone on staff who would be interested in doing it. So we may forego that and perhaps give more. More support to students early in the school year after school, use those fundings and. Put it, uh. Put it during the school year.
That sounds like an appealing option this year. Everything's been different year to year, the past couple of years, but that sounds appealing.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, uh. I think a break would be healthy for most of us, uh, after the last two years, but, um. I, I have to tell you, the, the faculty has, the faculty, the staff has been marvelous. They have been doing a great job with the children. The children have been amazing. They, uh, we always say kids adapt fast. Wow. Has this been a, 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 an object lesson in that fact? They came in one day with masks on, on the, you know, they come in on Monday without masks, they're gone. Off to the races. And, um, they have treated each other with enormous dignity and respect, whether someone has a mask on or not. I have not heard one iota of conflict whatsoever. Kids have been phenomenal. But again, I'm not surprised because the leadership of, uh, Mr. Andrews and the staff has, has been solid all along.
Thank you. So the last item of business, any business from the committee? Um, the only thing I can think of is that, you know, it was really nice, the last couple of meetings to have. Some updates on student achievement now that we're moving out of sort of the, I mean. Most of us on the committee, except for Lauren, you know, came into this during COVID. And the focus has been the. You know, policy changes that needed to happen throughout the school year and and updates. In relation to COVID, and so as things feel more normal. You know, I think it would be great to continue to focus on, you know, student achievement and. How through, you know, anything we decide on as a, that'll help us keep focused on, you know, the end game and that. Whatever we're voting on is moving towards student achievement. Both in, um, you know, policy, supporting the staff and and finances, so. You know, I, I was trying to think about how that would be best, you know, consistently worked into the meeting, and I think, you know, Mr. Andrews, you definitely have your. Finger on the pulse in that regard, and so I don't. I don't think I expect that we'll get an achievement update at every single meeting, but whenever there is an opportunity for an update. That'd be great if you could integrate it into the principal's report.
I, I'd be happy to, happy to do that.
Does anybody else from the committee have any new business that they wanted to mention?
Madam Chair, one thing I didn't mention is that, um, related to curriculum, uh, we are, we, the superintendent did include. Uh, funding for a social studies, uh, curriculum. For the coming school year to update our program in that area, and so we, uh, announced that today at the staff meeting. And we'll be forming a committee to look at our social studies curriculum. And, um, what we can offer in the coming school year, uh, that would be an inclusive. Uh, and integrated, uh, program, uh, for the school, and that might be something else that would, um, help with achievement. In terms of giving students a purpose to read and, um, and also learn about history.
Which, um, which curriculum is it, Mr. Andrews?
We haven't looked at anything yet, of course.
Oh, you just approved bringing something in.
Approved funding, yep, the superintendent approved, um, put forward, um, funding for that. And, um, in your budget, and so we'll be forming, um, a committee for that, and. I'd be happy to have, um, any members here, um, help review, uh, materials that we, um, we look at. We haven't looked at anything yet, though.
I'd love to. I'm, I'm sure you're not shocked. I, um, I, without, with, with holding myself back, I will just say. That, um, I, uh, I have deep feelings about the relationship between. Accurate and holistic. Views of our country and the level of, um, very unprofessional polarization that's going on in the country right now. And I think that it all starts here, you know, it's so like local to national, and so I applaud you for bringing something in and mentioning the word. Inclusive, I think there is a way to, um, posit yourself in the, in the entire history of this country. Still feel like a proud American and tell the truth, and I, um, and include people's experiences. And so, um, I appreciate that effort and would love to lend anything that I can, you know, to support you in that. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you, thank you, Ms. Anderson, appreciate that offer.
All right, uh, seeing no other new business, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn, oh, Michelle.
Sorry, I forgot I was on mute. Just on top of what you had said earlier, Gina, um, in going back to the. Try in the chorus class and kind of the school committee's responsibilities. I haven't done it yet, but looking to, um, put forward some. Um, additional agenda items, um, to structure the meeting, so that we're looking at the things that is. What our job as, um, school committee members are and. Been, um, thinking about and not really the time to work on. Things include budget, student achievement was one of them. So, uh, a couple of other things that I really haven't had a chance to, but, and kind of do that as well.
Regina, your, your mic is off.
I know, sorry, I muted myself for a second. Thanks, Michelle. All right, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn. Oh, and to executive session, not to reconvene into open session.
I'll, um. I'll make a motion to adjourn, um, uh, the meeting to, uh, executive session, not to return to open session. With, um, the time being eight thirty PM.
And, and the reason we're going to an executive session is to approve the executive session minutes from March eighth. Can, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with. Union personnel and to conduct a strategy. Session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent, and to discuss. Deployment of cert, cert, security devices as outlined on the agenda.
Everything that.
Yeah, you don't have to say it again.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll second.
All in favor.
Is that Lauren?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Lauren. All in favor. Michelle. All right, meeting adjourned at eight, eight thirty.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh, so I'll call the executive session meeting toward eight thirty-one. We got the minutes. Uh, earlier today. Eleven forty, I don't know if you had a chance to review the executive session meeting minutes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes dated March eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor. Perfect. So we sent a quick message, uh, after Thursday's meeting, we were able to effectively. Come to a P A on all of our items. I'm so glad, I saw you, the, um. What is John's title? The, uh, negotiations.
We're still recording.
Thank you.